Happy Tuesday. Welcome to the Forsyth County Board of Education regular board meeting for April 2022, April 19, 2022. If we would, let's all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make the note that on today's agenda that after our recognitions, we're going to take a brief break and allow anybody that wants to leave to leave, they can. So in front of us, we do have an agenda. Are there any recommended changes to the agenda?
No recommended changes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
So moved to approve the agenda by Ms. Adams and second by Mr. Cleveland. All right. So the first item, we all in favor for? All in favor? unanimous. All right. Recognitions is going to be our first item up on the agenda with Ms. Leeann Rice.
It's my pleasure to celebrate our employee of the month this month. Our celebration is sponsored by Jim &amp; Nix, and we're very appreciative of how they help us celebrate our employees of the month each month. This month, we are recognizing Pat Klizinski from Johns Creek Elementary School. She is the school nurse there. And Pat, if you want to come down while I'm saying all kinds of wonderful things about you. Pat, come stand with me first so I get to say all these great things. We have quite, you can see, quite a few notifications about how absolutely amazing Pat is and how she served the Johns Creek community, and I would love to share a few of those with you all. Pat is the glue that has held our team together since the beginning of the COVID crisis. While she has always been on top of every possible medical and health issue we might face in our classrooms and is very proactive in setting us up for success, her guidance and assistance during the COVID-19 crisis has been instrumental in allowing us to keep our school open and our classes functioning. Nurse Pat develops relationships with students, staff, and parents. She is respectful to all stakeholders and has navigated how to do so in a community that's very diverse. I have worked in four schools over my career and seen many school nurses. Nurse Pat outshines like no other. I'm speaking not only as a teacher here at Johns Creek, but also as a Johns Creek parent. Not only does she excel in the mundane daily tasks of fixing scrapes, calling parents, and administering medicine, but she also communicates and serves as a bridge between teacher, student, and parent. Nurse Pat is the kindest and most welcoming person ever. She is always so loving and ready to help or answer all of your questions, regardless if it's a student, parent, or teacher. Our school is incredibly lucky to have her, and we're all going to be sad to see her go when she retires at the end of this school year. She is loved and respected by everyone, students and staff alike, and she has been a pillar of our school throughout this whole pandemic. And finally, Nurse Pat constantly engages with our staff, students, and their families. She goes above and beyond the call of duty with phone calls, follow-up emails, and visits to classrooms to ensure and follow up on the health and wellness of everyone who makes up our school community. She is a treasure to have here on campus and continually contributes more and more each day as COVID demands have brought new waves of sickness among our students. She does not waver. She shows up every day with a smile on her face and a passion and love to care for others. We are so proud of her and the way that she cares for everyone in our building. Pat, on behalf of Forsyth County Schools, thank you so much for your service to the community. Congratulations on your retirement and congratulations for being our employee of the month.
Thank you so much.
And now you can walk down and get your certificate. Dr. Bearden might have a job for you still. That is our recognitions. We are now going to move to the superior spotlight performance, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Bob Carnarole, the principal at North Forsyth High School.
Thank you, Dr. Bearden and the Board of Education for inviting North Forsyth High School this evening to share our exciting community strategy schools initiative that is allowing us to better serve our students, our families, and our community. I would like to introduce two very special folks that have been involved in this initiative from the start. I have Ms. Amy Dykes, who was our student support coordinator. She's also our graduation coach. She wears many hats, as you will see in the presentation. And then also our assistant administrator, Dr. Joan Graham.
Thank you for having us this evening and giving us a chance to let you know what we've been up to. So the work that we're doing this year focuses on community strategy school work. A community strategy school is a public school that partners with families and organizations within the community to provide opportunities for our students to be well-rounded and also to support them in all their goals so they can be most successful. So that's kind of our goal in the work that we're doing. And we've started this work focusing on one of the four pillars of a community strategy school, which is integrated student supports. So with the start of this process, we hosted focus groups where we would question students and community members, family members, and our staff to find out what their goals are, what their passions are, what they think we need to improve upon, and where they see gaps in what we're providing and offering to the students. And from those focus groups, we learned what we needed to work on. And so from that, we've developed three partnerships with some of our community organizations. The first is the Place of Forsyth, also with Family Ties and WorkSource Georgia. So the way that we kind of developed our plan with our partnership with the Place of Forsyth is thanks to some data from United Way. They created what's called the Child Well-Being Index. And from that index, we could see that our community sits at the average or below-average mark when it comes to the Child Well-Being Index. So from that, we knew that we had some needs that we needed to provide and meet with our students and families. And United Way provided financial support for us to be able to create our school pantry called The Source and also to set up our food capture program. So our food pantry at North, we call The Source, and it provides toiletries, snacks, and also simple meal items for our families and students. Our students can go in there before school or after school. They can get anything that's in the pantry that we always tell them to start with three items so they don't raid. Our raiders don't raid our pantry. But they can go in there and get what they need. There's no qualification process or anything like that. It's open to everybody. And then also, our families can order from our school pantry. Once a week, they can put in an order. We have student volunteers that pack the boxes, and they can pick those up. And so for that, one of the things we realized at the start of this process is that our students were not picking up green beans or fruit or things that we knew these families would need. And so once we opened it up to the parents to put in orders, then we saw that they were actually getting the groceries and toiletries and things that they really needed for their home. So we also started our food capture program, and it's, we are a chapter of Helping Hands Ending Hunger. And what we do is that breakfast and lunch, we'll collect uneaten food, and the students will place it in bins or a milk cooler, and we'll collect anything that's unopened, that's packaged, so yogurt, applesauce, carrots, anything like that, milk and juice, and then also produce. And our specialized instruction students will help us count those items. They help wash and things like that and get it ready to go out, back out to our community. And we're collecting over 800 pounds of food a month. So it's so much. One of our biggest messages to our students is that food is not trash. So we really want them to understand that that food can then go to somebody in need. And we offer it back to our community through where we take it to the Place of Forsyth, and then also our families can order the items that we collect.
So you see some of our smiling student volunteers here. One of our students, Daniel Adesina, who was instrumental in helping get the food recapture program started, states, "I got involved with The Source after working at the BOE and seeing what aspects of a successful environment were missing and how much of a disadvantage some kids at North have it when it comes to getting the resources they need. I think it's important so kids can experience a community that supports and nurtures the needs of their total well-being, ensuring the foundations for success." And then these two smiling ladies, front and center here, are Chastity and Josiah. And they say, "I love helping out in The Source because it's a fun way to give back to our community, and I get to do it with friends. It makes me feel like a better person knowing I'm helping making a change."
So our second partnership that we developed was with Family Ties. And Family Ties comes in, and they provide counseling and therapy for our students during the school day. And one of our goals in setting up our partnerships was to remove barriers. And one of the barriers that we found with mental health and one of the things we learned from the focus groups is that transportation was a problem and the cost of therapy was a problem. And so we're able to take both of those barriers away by providing therapy during the school day. So Family Ties has two offices in our school. We have two therapists that come full-time each week, and they see over 80 students a week. So they're servicing our students and meeting that need for mental health care. And then our third partnership is with WorkSource Georgia. So our community made it very clear that they really wanted us to provide opportunities for our students to get them more prepared for college and then also to prepare them for the workplace. And so we have partnered with WorkSource, and they come in and lead wellness sessions for our students. And a lot of those sessions are soft skills sessions, so resume building, financial literacy, time management. They'll do interview skills and different things like that. And we offer that to our entire student body. And then also, they're going to be leading a boot camp for welding the month of June. It's a four-week program that our students, our recent graduates, will be able to be a part of. And they will bring in a semi-truck, actually, and they'll be teaching welding to our students. And at the end of the four weeks, they'll be fully certified in welding. They'll be Six Sigma certified and OSHA safety certified. And we've opened this up to all of the schools in our county, and we have four students that are not North Forsyth students that are going to be in attendance during the program. And then we have 10 of our own students that will be going through the program. We're really excited about that. At the end of the boot camp, they bring in companies to interview the students, and they offer them a career on the last day of the boot camp, and then they have a graduation ceremony. So we're very excited about that opportunity, and we're looking forward to growing that program with WorkSource.
So we feel like our programs here have given equitable access to all students to help all students. And so when we were asking students their opinions and kind of what they gained from it, we asked them for quotes, obviously. And so one student found a quote from Einstein that says, "The only source of knowledge is experience." And so Our Source and our other programs have not only helped to meet the needs of our school and our community, but it's also provided the experience of gaining the knowledge of what it feels like to help others. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Any questions for Forsyth?
I'm just blown away. I think this is wonderful. I mean, when you talk about community, you have really touched upon all the community that's within your schools and then reaching out. I mean, I've always said Forsyth is just awesome because there's so many various nonprofits and so many groups that are doing such great things. And so why should we reinvent things here when we can partner? This is wonderful, you know? And you had said, Daniel, what grade was he?
He's a senior.
He's a senior. And I mean, that's remarkable, too, because, you know, taking that, it looks like you're having a lot of the students take that initiative and really, you know, moving forward with this. So thank you. This is wonderful.
Our school pantry and our food capture is run by our students, which has been phenomenal.
Yeah, that's great.
The only part that I play with our orders is I do take, I get the orders, which has the family's name and number and things like that. And then I remove that information, and I give them a family number, an order number, pass it off, and then everything else the students take care of. So it's really been great to see them want to help each other and pitch in and help the community.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all your work.
I like that this addresses a program we were working on. We had Propel, and then we were working on Beyond Propel a few years back. And I know some of us were on different subcommittees. I think I was on the Resources Committee. I think Todd Shirley and maybe even Matt Ork was on the committee I was on, and we were trying to address some of the concerns. And we met, I think Mitch Youngland might have been on it. We were meeting at Central, and we were trying, and one of the concerns was mental health services and how we could get those services potentially into the school. And the hurdles were always transportation and financing. And the fact that you were addressing that by getting these services into the students and for free. At the time, it was always money, 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 always boiled down to money and time, and you just found an answer. And that was a few years back, and I'm so excited that you found an answer. So you checked something off on Beyond Propel, so I'm really excited. I would love to make sure it's other people on the team that were trying to work on that, that message gets passed on.
One of the things with Beyond Propel, I was on the survey. So I was analyzing the survey results. And one of the weaknesses which shocked me, because North is such a close-knit community, was we had about roughly, I can't remember the exact number, but about 40% of the kids say that they didn't have an adult in the building that they felt close to. That floored us because we prided ourselves on making ourselves available to students.
So when we revamped our schedule with raider time and wellness sessions that kind of built into this, so that data has sort of driven it, and then Amy and her crew have taken that and run with it. And Mr. Carnarole has given us the leeway to do that and the freedom to make those decisions for our kids. So it's kind of, it's been a great experience.
I just say yes and get out of the way. That's pretty much it.
That's great stuff.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take like a two-minute recess just to let anybody that wants to leave can leave since the spotlight's over, and then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue with our business meeting. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? No questions regarding the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Cleveland, second by Ms. Morrissey. All in favor? The next item on our agenda is the presentation and discussion items, our financial report with Mr. Larry Hamel.
I have it memorized, but I don't know if it's going to be any good. Good evening. Tonight, we're going to discuss the March 2022 financial statements. As always, there we go. As always, we keep goal three in mind. So for March 31, 2022, we start off the month with about $183 million in cash. You can see the capital receipts listed there, as well as the cash receipts. And then you can see the cash disbursements as well, which is about $46 million versus about $29 million cash receipts. And we ended the month with about $165.5 million. Year-to-date revenue, right now, Avalorum is already at 100% collections, so we're good for that for the year. And we've got three months left. We are at 84.92% collection. We're on par where we were last year, and we've got three months left in the year. On the expense side, we spent $41.9 million this month. We spent a total of $376 for the year. We have encumbrances of about $6 million. As you know, that would decrease as we go into June. And we're at 73%, 73.11%. And we're a little bit on par with last year, a little bit ahead where we were last year. But in terms of where we're at, we're doing pretty well. We're behind expenditures total as a total budget, or maybe a percent and a half behind in terms of what we're spending. We look at debt service. You can see we're at $50.9 million in debt service, and we're at $52.2 million for SPOLOX V. We have one more month of collections for SPOLOX V, and then we start SPOLOX VI. We'll present that SPOLOX VI to you probably starting in May, when we get the first amount of money in for that. Special revenue funds, this is all the federal funds as well as school nutrition combined. As you can see, revised budget is $13 million. We spent about $7 million of it. We got $58.89. A lot of these federal funds, they really don't get spent until the summertime, when a lot of stuff is going on with ordering books and stuff like that for the next year and classes, excuse me, not classes. They go to training during the summer, like Title I stuff. For capital projects, right now, we're at $34 million in our capital projects fund, and I'll talk a little bit more than that later. And right now, we're about $11 million in our school nutrition fund for the month of March. One thing I did want to point out is if you look at Fund 306, it's $4 million. If you think about it, it's hard to imagine, but only about two years ago, we were at $149 million in there. So you can see how fast we spent that money down to get all these buildings complete. Currently, we have about $176 million in investments. SPOLOX IV, excuse me, SPOLOX V, almost done with collections. We're averaging 3.7 overall. And if you see there the last three months, we've been averaging 4.5. We're actually collecting $868,000 more per month just in the last 12 months than the whole average going back, it's almost 60 months for this activity. The elementary schools, we give out about $4.7 million in their bank accounts. The activity is normal for this time of the year. Last year, they had about $4 million. Middle schools, they have $1.8 million. Activity is normal for this time of the year. They had about $1.4 last year. And high schools, activity is also normal. They're at 5.7, and they were about $5 million last year. A lot of the schools have been picking up activities since we've come out of COVID, and they've rebuilt their balances up. Right now, about 46% of the balances are in the high schools, 39. Elementary, 15. That falls almost in line where we were last year. A little bit difference between the elementary and high schools. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is the code of conduct for 2022 and 2023 with Todd Shirley.
Okay, hopefully that will open in just a minute. Board members and Dr. Bearden, Ms. Abbott, every year, the Department of School Safety begins in approximately November with an email to the principals to begin discussions with LSCs about changes that they would like to see in the code of conduct. We accept those recommendations from principals for a couple of months. During that time, this year, we had a number of meetings with representatives from my department of parents that had concerns about specific items in the code of conduct. And typically, those items center around one thing, which is the dress code. So the biggest change that you're going to see this year is with our dress code. Once we receive all of that feedback, we compile that feedback, we review that feedback in our office, and we look at what we actually can do and can't do, because there are some recommendations that we just are not able to place in the code of conduct. This year, I also had the opportunity to go to Denmark High School and watch a presentation by their students on the code of conduct, because they had some concerns with some of the items in there. And it was a wonderful presentation, so I want to commend those students. Came back at the end of all of this, and I put a committee together. The committee had representatives from our department. It had principal representatives, Ms. Jennifer Cratchelo, and probably most importantly, Ms. Tracy Winkler and Ms. Valerie Lowe. We wanted their input from a CTA standpoint, because they are so in touch with what our business community is looking for. And we came up with the new code of conduct, dress code specifically for you. And one of the things that I think that you will notice is it is a much simpler, it is a much cleaner version of the code of conduct. It still allows for, it still allows for a school to make decisions on their own. If a principal wanted to say, "We're going to have a hat day," then that principal can say that. Ultimately, the principal of the school has final authority over the dress code of that school as it is contained in the code of conduct under principal authority. But what we did is we came up with something, we came up really with something that came out of Portland School District, and we made some modifications there. And the Portland School District had very good feedback from their code of conduct. So the code of conduct that you see in front of you contains one change with the dress code, and that is the elimination of all of the other dress code and the simplification of that. And then directly after that, under Number 29, instigating a rule violation. One of the things that we have run into in our office with the P3 tip line is students and people using that P3 tip line inappropriately and specifically utilizing that P3 tip line to harass other students. In other words, make tips that are inaccurate. So we did place in there the part about intentional dissemination of faults and unfounded information. Because even though that is a tip line that is anonymous, if that tip line contains harassing information to an individual, through a court order, we can search that IP address and find out who's making those harassing, those harassing statements, and then work with law enforcement to go back. So those are essentially the two major changes in the code of conduct. Everything else that you see in front of you that is either marked out is marked out because we have to do that per the state or marked out because we are making changes to board members, to chairs, to vice chairs, and to dates on the code of conduct. The only thing that I would say to you is that if you do adopt the code of conduct, the only thing that we might have to change would be anything that comes out from the state that is mandated. After that, we don't have a choice but to make those changes. So it is my recommendation tonight that you do adopt the code of conduct for the 2022-23 school year.
I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the code of conduct?
Second.
Is there a second discussion? I just want to make sure that I know the purpose of the code of conduct is to eliminate any kind of distraction during the school day. You feel that this policy still provides that for the principal?
I do feel that way, yes. That's one of the reasons that we included principals, we included principals in our focus group. And then after we included those principals in our focus group, the new code of conduct was emailed out to every principal in the district to give us feedback on that, and they were all in support.
And will they all work together to kind of be cohesive?
It is always our hope that they do that. You know, realistically, dress code is a very difficult thing when you have so many other items on your plate. But, you know, we do recognize that there is no code of conduct anywhere that is perfect. There is no dress code anywhere that is perfect. But what we have to do is build a dress code that is both simple for students to understand, simple for parents to understand, and is reasonable for parents, because we do understand that sometimes it gets difficult to purchase items for students. And some of you have expressed that to me before, and some of our principals have expressed that to me before, but yet still gives the principal ultimate authority over that.
To Daryl's question, though, it's not uncommon for especially middle school and
and high school principals to talk about that at their meetings so that they're consistent across the board.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct.
Some consistency across the board because, you know, why can they do this at West? They can't do this at North. So...
Yeah. That's correct.
I, I hope that we do have some consistency.
And to Wes's point, the law is very clear. If students are wearing something that's disruptive to the school environment, the principal has the authority to have that student remove whatever that item is.
That is correct.
And to Darla's point on consistency, that is part of the reason that why that theme, that question, the concern has been embedded in our, our upcoming strategic plan because we've heard that from the community. So it's in there.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Cleveland. We have a second by Ms. Morrissey. All in favor? Namus.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is the local facilities plan, adoption and certification with Mr. Matt Ward.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, thanks for having me, uh, here to present a great topic for us because it aligns greatly with what else is going along in the district. Every five years, just like a strategic plan, um, SPOS, those, things of that nature, every five years, uh, we have to do a five-year facilities plan and get it reviewed by the State Department, get it back to us for your review, make sure everything aligns, make sure we're doing the correct thing and moving forward from the state DOE's eyes. And then that's kind of our roadmap for a facility side moving forward for the next five years. The timeline for this, um, we submitted a preliminary report to the state DOE back in December. Uh, the state took a little longer this time to get it back to us because the metro districts were kind of overwhelming a little bit at that point. We got it back in February, late February. They had no recommendations for us. They approved the plan preliminary. What that did is that then moved us on to approval to have a site visit. They put together a state DOE representative as well as members from other school districts to review our facilities plan and do official site visit. Now, they are still doing these virtual. Um, our, my team participates in these around the state, so we're very familiar with this. Once we had that recommendation and they come and, uh, did their review, now we're at this stage, uh, and I'll talk a little bit more detail about what their findings were, uh, and then we'll, I'll ask for the board to make a recommendation. And the final timeline is once you stamp of approval, it'll go back to the state DOE for their signature, and we're good for five years. Um, the best part about this, I'll give you a little information because I think it is something we all need to celebrate. Um, I want to give kudos to Greg Pruitt and Jan Sells from my planning department. They have done a phenomenal job, uh, prior to anything, uh, once we submitted it, Deborah Robinson from the DOE reached out and said it was one of the most thorough plans they had ever seen at the state level. Um, we did a great job of outlining every single school's needs. Our needs assessment was very accurate, and we're actually maximizing funding more than we've ever done before. So we're very, very excited about that, and I'm proud of my team for doing that. Um, when the site team came in, they did this visit in March, and Dr. Bearden was part of that. They presented that to him. Um, we were very proud because Deborah Robinson and members from other districts, they had metro reses, so they get a nice metro feel of what we go through and deal with. They also bring in other small districts from around the state because everyone can learn from each other. It's not just, you only get reviewed by larger districts. So it was a very great makeup put together. Um, they reviewed all aspects of the district. They don't just look at facilities. They make you review all of your transportation areas, your buses, your fleets, your mechanics. They also look at Todd Shirley's review of safety in your district. That is a huge piece to the new, how they do five-year facilities plans. And again, so they look at everything. It's not just the building itself. We were very excited, and Dr. Bearden was on the review, they had absolutely zero recommendations. They gave us a full page of commendations. Then all they did was say how fantastic the plan was. They talked about, we are so, they were, they were so impressed about how well because of our growth that we were able to be within less than two percent on our growth projections. And they just made a comment that we've been building schools accurately, we do our renovations accurately. They were just so impressed based on how fast our growth is that we have been so accurate and we keep our funding that way. Um, they, so again, that summary was given to you as an attachment, uh, but I would highly recommend you to look at that. They asked us how we do our buses. They asked, they were so impressed with our safety, they had never seen the extent of safety in all of our schools, from our secure vestibules in every single school and now including this building, that they were just so impressed that we have really put a focus on safety of our buildings as well as they recommend, they commended us on how up-to-date our facilities are with our newer schools and looking at our five-year projection, what we're going to be doing to our existing schools. So that was very exciting, uh, to have that. Also, we're excited because it aligns with our strategic plan. This timeline came exactly at the right time to where we're going through the strategic plan, and what we found in our facilities plan directly aligns to the needs of what we had discussed in those public forums about we want to keep our schools feeling small and will also may make sure that we manage our growth, which this plan clearly does. You'll see by their review. Um, it also aligns, they commended us on our needs assessment. We, uh, really lucked out by doing this needs assessment, moving into SPOS six referendum last year. So that's an internal review that we go through and review what our schools need. And we have many, many schools now that have hit that mark of twenty years to where they really need upgrades. We've got a lot to do in our existing buildings. We're excited for that over five years, and it was great to hear this external team came in and said, "You are exactly aligned to what your needs show in your funding." So that, again, is a great alignment. Um, and again, it, they also confirmed we provided all of our list of projects for SPOS six and not one recommendation to change any of them. They recommended all of them, and they did not even recommend additional. So again, I'm very proud of this plan. This is a lot of work, uh, and it takes a lot of time and effort. And again, going back to the maximizing of funding, we're just very proud that we're able to push that money right back into our schools. So with that, uh, Dr. Bearden, I ask for a recommendation to approve the resolution as well as to adopt the five-year facilities plan for Forsyth County schools. Recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the certificate and, um, the, uh, resolution?
Yeah.
For the local facilities plan?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ms. Morrissey, second by Mr. Cleveland. Discussion?
I just want to give you kudos. I mean, I know that, that document was three hundred and some months, seventy-three...
That's the condensed version. It's a little over five.
It was really long, but the amount of work that it took to do that, because that, the better you do that, the more that helps us qualify for the state funding that we receive because, for example, when a school's roof or whatever reaches twenty years, that's when they say, "Okay, you're right. We'll help you fix that. We have to pay some too, but they'll help us provide that." So the better you provide that documentation, the better we're going to qualify the funds that we should be getting back out of our tax dollars. So it helps us pay for what we need to pay for here. So thank you for all that work. And you answered a lot of questions, but your plan for how to implement those changes in a, in an organized fashion that will be less stress on our schools and do it in a more efficient way sounded like a really good new idea, so I like your...
Yes, and we're looking at doing more of a cluster model method to fix, doing SPOS six this year, uh, for five years so that we aren't just doing smaller pockets of work. We're going to maximize our funding by doing the state, uh, application the year prior, but then we're going to come in and do everything on a school's list at one time. Now, that may bump a few schools down a little bit later, but it's better instead of trying to, "You get this this year, and then I got to come in again and do it this year." It's better to do that, and also it maximizes our capital outlay funding.
The thing I noticed is that we did have that growth before COVID. We got a little break in COVID from the growth, but we're going to be right back at it, growing almost an elementary or middle school every year. So the growth is coming back.
And they made a recommendation, they, they talked about that as well, that, um, we did see almost a plateau and Forsyth County world of a plateau. We're still growing, but they did make a comment that they were very impressed that our growth continued through COVID, and now it's jumping right back to where it was.
We've seen in the news, if you don't keep your schools up, once you get behind, it's very difficult to keep up. It's something we have to do year after year after year.
Yeah, we got into that situation a little bit when the economy tanked, and we, we couldn't, we just didn't have the money, and it was catch-up for a while, so...
Yeah, I was going to mention that. I mean, it's not only this, it's what you've been doing and your team's been doing all along. So thank you, you know, for just your exceptional work.
We love working with our principals. They're good people. They, yeah. Sometimes they like us coming, sometimes they don't. They won't tell us that.
All right. All in favor?
All right. Namus, thank you very much.
All right. The next item on our agenda is strategic plan with Mitch Young.
No PowerPoint tonight. I went a little long last week. I'll try to stick to script this week. But I, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you again. Uh, but since presenting last week the strategic planning strategy map, I've received quite a few questions and comments, and so I'd like just a moment to maybe give some clarification and, uh, maybe provide some answers at that. Uh, the strategic map before you was put together by a cross-section of our community, as I shared last week. It provides the big picture direction for our school system for the next five years. The plan is driven by focusing on what is best for children. It was a very open process, one where we had tremendous community participation, and I would just tell you that I'm very thankful for all of those who volunteered from our community and our schools and gave up their time to help put this together. Repeatedly throughout this process, the social and emotional health of our children was emphasized. And I think it's safe to say that all those involved, most if not all, agreed with some of these statements. When children are hungry, they cannot learn. When children are in physical pain, they cannot learn. They cannot learn when they're in emotional pain. When they feel threatened, they cannot learn. And when they're under the influence of drugs and alcohol, they cannot learn. And all of these are the social and emotional challenges that we face in our schools every day. They are the challenges that our teachers and our staff must recognize and balance as we continually focus on increasing student achievement. They're huge challenges, and they require a community approach. And actually, tonight, hearing Bob Croneroly in North Forsyth present what they did speaks exactly into the heart of what we're talking about. These huge challenges need a community approach and commitment beyond what a school can do on its own. Our leaders in this county, our business partners, our nonprofit agencies, our faith communities, our healthcare community, our government officials, and our families must all continue to connect in order to find solution to challenges of mental illness and child abuse and poverty and substance abuse, just to name a few. Until these big challenges are solved, we still have an obligation to do what we can to help our students get a fair shot of success in life and equal opportunity for success regardless of their background or their heritage or their beliefs or their personal challenges. We have an obligation to get students to master the required Georgia state standards, and we have all committed to helping all of our graduates embody the five elements of the Forsyth County Schools' lunar profile. In doing all these things, we operate within the letter and the spirit of the current laws, and we will continue to do that with future laws. And I know there's things out there ranging from House Bill ten eighty-four to opt-in and opt-out choices for parents. There are these and other bills that are still to be approved, and we still have to wait for our legal interpretations to be provided to us. But when they come to us, we will be in compliance with everything that's set forth, as we have been. Once those interpretations are provided to us, we will make certain that our action and accountability teams, and these are the teams who are working to put our new strategic initiatives and performance measures and action steps together for this plan, we'll make sure that they're in line with any existing and new laws that connect with their work. So, having said all that, I am really proud to stand before you, Dr. Bearden, and ask for a recommendation for your approval for the twenty-two, twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-seven strategic map.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Mr. Young, for your, your leadership in facilitating the process and all of the community members that participate. We greatly appreciate, uh, the number of hours that, that were put in to make this happen. Uh, if this is adopted by our board tonight, this becomes our plan for the next five years, and we have to work with our community to make it happen. And I am also very proud to recommend approval.
All right. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
So moved by Ms. Adams, second by Mr. Cleveland. Is there a discussion? Go ahead.
Um, I, I just wanted to thank you. I know I've thanked you before for all your work and everyone's work. Um, to me, you know, I could look at pieces of this, right? And I have my own thoughts and my own opinions, and I could say, "Oh, well, I really liked that vision," or really, you know, and like these things, and I'm sad to see this go, or I really wish this would have been added. Um, but I think it's my duty, you know, if the process was done right and the process did have community involvement throughout the whole thing, it's not created in a vacuum. So my decision is not what I believe. It's, you know, what is best for the community? Was the process done right? And, um, I mean, I love it. I love the outcomes. Um, and I just thank you for making sure that the process did remain true in its form and inviting all, you know, different aspects of the community there. Um, and so that's, you know, how I came to my decision. I mean, if, if the process was done right, then the outcome speaks for itself, in my opinion. So thank you.
Thank you.
As far as documentation goes, where are we at on that and what's the plan?
Yep. So, so if this, the strategy map is approved, uh, we'll get that posted right away for the, for the community to see. Um, again, that was the part that was put together by the planning committee based on the feedback from the community engagement and the, and all the feedback loops that we had. That will be posted, and then we will unleash our action accountability teams, which are a combination of, uh, local school leaders and district office leaders. They will, they will begin to put together all those action plans, and as those are completed, our hope is to have those completed by mid-May so that they can be posted by the end of the school year, certainly by the beginning of the summer. Our hope is, uh, at our leadership retreat with all of our principals and assistant principals, uh, which is June sixth and seventh. We would like to turn them loose on that so they can begin the hard work of taking the strategic plan that we have for our system and aligning their school improvement plans to that. And all of that, to, to answer your question, again, at every stage that we go along, we'll continue to post things as they're finalized for the community to see.
Okay.
I think that, um, like we said last week, this, what I'm like about this whole process is that this was built for Forsyth County schools by Forsyth County community, uh, no other influence. So thank you for that. I also think that because the community was involved and they part, take in the vision, the mission, and the values, that now is a good time also to evaluate and let our partners in education, our community partners that we have, uh, what our values are and what our vision, vision is so that we can make sure that they align with ours.
Absolutely.
Um, so we should, we should do that.
Yep.
All in favor? All right. Namus, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.
All right. The sec, the other item on the action items, the last one, is the change of the regular board meeting time with Dr. Jeff Bearden.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Uh, last week at our work session, we had a conversation about our public participation policy. Uh, after speaking with board members and consulting with our attorney, I'm going to be recommending to the board tonight that starting in May, we begin our executive sessions at five PM. Uh, the regular meeting of the Board of Education will begin at six, just as it does now, so no change there. We will take a break after recognitions to allow those folks, students and staff who are recognized, to leave if they want to leave. Then we'll conduct the business meeting of the, uh, business meeting, um, and then we will take another break to allow staff who is here to leave, and then we will begin our public participation. Uh, we will not, uh, limit public participation. We will continue to do as we do now. Uh, as many people who sign up to speak, we will allow to speak. They will still be given three minutes to speak. I will say that, uh, our public participation policy in consultation with our attorney is probably the least restrictive public participation policy in metro Atlanta, but the board felt strongly that they wanted to continue to give our community unlimited access to the board and to speak for the three minutes. So the only change we're really making on behalf of the community, we're going to start executive session at five. The board will do that business, but we will not start the regular business meeting until six. So there's no change for those of you in the community, and for those of you who sign up to speak, it'll be the last item on the agenda, and you'll be given three minutes, just as you are now. And I'd recommend we approve that change.
Is there a motion to approve the, the change in the regular board meeting time?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Morrissey. Any discussion?
Oh, just one question. So logistically, we're going to have a separate called meeting at five because we've already set up our regular meetings.
We'll, we'll start the regular meeting at five and meet, the first action item will be to go into executive session, and then we will return at six PM.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's been okay?
Yes.
And that's been okay, that we can do that in the regular meeting?
Yes.
Good.
Any further instructions? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Namus, thank you. So, our next item on the agenda is public participation. And this evening, we have several residents signed up to speak. And I want to say we're greatly appreciated for each one of you that are taking the time this evening to come speak with us. As Dr. Bearden talked about, it's very important to us that we listen to our residents and we listen to the people, our stakeholders. And to do so, though, we have to have order. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to highlight the six sections of our public participation policy. Meetings of the Board of Education are held to conduct the affairs and business of school system. Although these meetings are not meetings of the public, the public is invited to attend. All meetings and citizens are invited to address the board at all regular meetings. All remarks shall be made to the board as a body and addressed through the chair. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual board members. Personnel issues involving individual employees, issues involving individual students, impending litigation are not subject for public participation. Speakers are asked to keep their remarks civil. Profane, rude, and personal attacks will not be allowed. The chairman of the board is responsible for enforcing this policy, and speakers who are found in violation will have their allotted speaking time immediately concluded. By reading and acknowledging acceptance prior to speaking during public participations, the speakers attest that they understand and will abide by this policy. Failure to abide by this policy may result in forfeit of the right to participate in future board meetings. Tonight, it's all about respect. All speakers and audience must be respectful. This is a business meeting. Speakers must follow the public participation policy. Audience members may not clap, make noise, or speak from their seats. Our words and actions must and will be respectful. Tonight, each speaker will get three minutes. Ms. Abbott will take the time. When she holds up the yellow sign, you will have 30 seconds left. And at the red, you'll have your three minutes will be up. With that said, our first speaker tonight is Mr. Jer Kerschel.
I am not a wizard. I do not have a lightning bolt scar on my forehead. I do not live on Privet Drive, yet the tale of Harry Potter resonates deeply with me. And I see myself in the story and in all of the characters. Last month, a child spoke eloquently about how obsessed she was with the Harry Potter books. But then she demanded that our libraries include stories of and by people based solely upon their superficial characteristics. Sadly, she missed the most important lessons we can learn from J.K. Rowling's works. Spoiler alert, Dumbledore is gay. It has nothing to do with the plot, and nothing would change if he was straight. J.K. Rowling wrote an amazing and inclusive narrative that resonates with all people, and not once did she depict graphic sexual content. This doesn't erase gays, but it teaches us something profound. What sex you're attracted to is the least interesting thing about you. Wearing a badge of LGBTQIAAPXYZ tells us nothing important about you at all. There are two universal truths we all grapple with. First is that we all share a common humanity. Everyone has problems, and everyone craves loves, even if the details differ. Everyone is going to suffer and die. The grand narratives of humanity apply to all of us. The other universal truth is that we are all unique individuals. There is no protagonist in any book that can perfectly represent you unless that protagonist is you. There is no teacher that can perfectly represent you unless you are that teacher. Every trans person lives a different life. Every East Indian person lives a different life, unique from all other people who you might group them with. Some people try to find a middle ground between common humanity and unique individuality. But this leads us to toxic tribalism, the worst of both worlds. It denies humanity to those outside our group, and it destroys our individuality by insisting we prioritize group identity over our own individual identity. The demand that books be judged by the demographics of their authors rather than by the value of their contents is a consequence of this kind of bigotry. Instead of asking the question, do these books in elementary and middle school libraries contain inappropriate sexual content? The woke will ask, what victimhood group do the authors of these books belong to? I am an excessively tolerant parent. I talk about very explicit adult topics with my kids at ages that other parents might not. But that's my prerogative, not the school district's. It's reasonable for me to have the expectation that I don't have to test every school water fountain for contaminants and diseases. And it is reasonable for others to have the expectation that they don't have to review every book their child picks up in a library for filth. I might choose differently than others on when to raise adult topics with my children, but the choice belongs to parents, not hyper-woke librarians nor national organizations in other states with political agendas. I understand the board is working on the problem of age-inappropriate books as fast as they can. But I'd like to ask them to commit to the principle that in the future, our school libraries will be as clean and safe as our drinking water. I'd also like them to commit to the principle that we should be encouraging our children to be able to see themselves in all others, from boring, straight, white males to fancy, interstellar wizards of color, rather than demanding token demographic role models. Thank you very much for your time. And again, if there's anybody who disagrees with me, I'd love to have one for them.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Louisa Jackson. No, Ms. Jackson's not here. Caroline Andrews. Ms. Kathleen Kranick. Shivie Meta.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Shivie Meta. I'm a current freshman in high school, and my pronouns are she/her. Members of the board, I can say, as a woman of color, being discriminated against is not an enjoyable experience. I can also say that I am not alone when I say that I have experienced discrimination in Forsyth County schools multiple times. Our schools have a largely diverse population that deserves to be represented in our schools via diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. Countless students, myself included, have spoken numerous times at Board of Education meetings voicing our support for the DEI plan. And we do so because we are aware of racism, homophobia, sexism, and other forms of discrimination that exist in Forsyth County schools. DEI exists to combat forms of discrimination, and ultimately, DEI only helps us. Further, our libraries deserve to represent the students. Removing books that represent us goes against everything that DEI stands for. It is already so hard to find minority representation in schools. So, to further limit this representation is blatant discrimination towards students like myself. Books written by minority voices discussing systemic racism and the existence of minorities in general belong in our schools. These books educate students on these imperative issues and mitigate discrimination in our schools. Members of the board, we, the students, have spoken time and time again about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and how important it is and how it belongs in our schools. Please, I ask that you listen to, as the students, as we are in schools currently. We know everything about what is happening in our schools. We ask that we be represented, minorities like myself, we ask that we be represented in the curriculum. We ask that we be represented in the libraries. We also ask that you remove the discriminatory book bans that you, the board members, have put in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Annette Intwistle. Brooke Damron.
Hi.
Hello.
I had originally just come here to say my piece and then go on my way. But then one of y'all's security guards came and informed me that y'all had asked for him to ask me to turn my Let's Go Burton shirt inside out. Said it was a personal attack, when that's freedom of speech and a violation of my rights. However, we keep hearing that they're trying to ban books, but the last time I checked, banning books means having no access to them at all. You can still purchase them at bookstores. What we are asking you to do is what we have always done, and that is to monitor what the children are exposed to. A child in middle school cannot go see a rated-R movie without parental consent. So, why are we allowing them to read books with adult content in them? Which goes back to question, if you're okay with the kids looking at porn, there's no other way to put it. That's what it is. It says a lot about that individual, and it's disturbing. If you did your jobs and reviewed and removed these books like we asked, we wouldn't have to keep coming to these meetings. So, do your job and protect our kids so we can move on.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Arnett.
Whenever you're ready. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jack Arnett. I'm a current high school senior in Forsyth County Schools. Two years ago, my literature class and I read the book Fahrenheit 451. And we were warned by our teachers about the dangers of book bans. So, you can imagine the surprise by me and my classmates seeing the same school district engage in such conduct. These bans represent the voices of a right-wing mob that profess a goal to protect the children, even as they stand hopeful that career students like myself and my friends disappear. When it soothes them, they ask for free speech. When they don't like it, they wish to suppress it. Free speech has limitations of time, place, and manner, which they do not care about when they make crude remarks in open spaces like this, but are happy to enforce in a school library. Hypocrisy is not just to ideas. It extends to people's lives. These books represent people, not just ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mitzi McAdam.
Thank you. I come here tonight as a concerned parent. I've had children in this school district for many years. I have four kids. My youngest is a junior at Central, and I've tried to be involved all along. I served on the Mashburn Local School Council for several years. I volunteered in just about every capacity offered to me. And I've enjoyed every minute of being a concerned and involved and invested parent. But there are some things that I, as a concerned parent, have never done. I've never thrown a public tantrum because I didn't immediately get my way regarding input that I gave about a perceived problem. I didn't get bent out of shape when my daughter came home sobbing because she had just learned about the Trail of Tears in fourth-grade history class. She was devastated. I didn't say, oh, no, she's going to learn to hate herself, or she's going to blame herself. That would be very nearsighted of me. Another thing I've never done, let me back up. I was happy that she was learning an authentic version of history and an unwashed version of history. Those are very important. It was also very important to me that she was learning empathy, learning empathy at school. Because I, like so many parents in this district, like the majority of parents in this district, I recognize the value of social and emotional learning at school as well as at home. It's crucial. Third thing I've never done, I've never tried to ban a book. I understand that my belief system is just that. It's my belief system. It's not your belief system. It's not yours. It's not the belief system of everyone in this room or in this county. By all means, take an interest in what your children read. Get involved. Restrict access to certain materials if you see fit. But if we think broadly enough, we recognize that what might offend you or what might disturb my child could save the very life of another child in another situation, be it an LGBTQ+ youth with suicidal ideations who finds something in a book that they relate to that gives them a reason to keep going, that makes them say, you know, maybe it really does get better after high school. Perhaps it's a student suffering unthinkable abuse, and she connects to something in a memoir or a novel, and it makes her say to herself, you know, I'm not responsible for what's happening to me. And she summons the courage, and she tells a trusted adult, and that abuse stops. My friends, these cases are going to outweigh all the hurt feelings and all of the pearl clutching in this room and in this county all day, every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ariani DePada.
Good evening, board members. I just wanted to start off by saying thank you for taking the time every month to hear what students, teachers, and even parents have to say. I'm currently a senior in high school, graduating in a month. I'll be attending my dream university, and I couldn't have done that without my amazing teachers along the way. And I really don't think we appreciate them enough. I just want to say a quick thank you to all my ELA teachers who have tried to incorporate diverse lessons and discussions in class. Thank you to my 10th-grade history teacher for making my identity feel valued. Thank you to my pathway teachers and advisors for always believing in me, especially when I doubted my capabilities. You have some great teachers in this county, so please, please don't drive them out. You also have some great students doing extraordinary things. But how is it helpful to them when we ban books and limit curriculum that's on AP exams? Will they even get credit for that in the future? There are students here today who have bravely spoken up about their experiences as a student and have been doing so for months. It takes a lot of courage to not just come up here and speak, but to also face the harassment from some of these adults on social media and in person. Student voices need to be uplifted, not limited. We do know what we're talking about, because the most, we do know what we're talking about. Probably the most, because we are impacted the most by what you choose to implement. Pausing implementation of staff DEI training and removing books because they don't align with someone's beliefs negatively harms students. You are not just adding to the hate the LGBTQIA+ community receives on a daily basis, but also not respecting students of color enough to continue a training that has proven to be beneficial. I'll be leaving in a few months, and I won't be facing the challenges continuing to plague our county schools, but other students will. We really, really need you to care, to show that you aren't just listening, but also acting to make schools safer and comfortable for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Wall.
Okay, this is about the book 19 Minutes by Jodi Picoult. It was one of the books that was removed from schools. Imagine a five-year-old waiting excitedly to ride the school bus on his first day of kindergarten. He has a new Superman lunchbox. He gets on the bus, but before he's halfway down the aisle, a kid trips him, takes his lunchbox, and tosses it out the window. That five-year-old has just experienced his first of many years of constant bullying. In the early years, he tells his teachers, but that only makes it worse, so he silently suffers. That's the life of Peter Houghton. Until one day, at the end of his junior year in high school, he armed himself. And in 19 minutes, he killed 10 students and one teacher and wounded many others. All it takes is a troubled kid with access to guns. Now to the claims of sexually explicit material. Peter had one childhood friend who, until she was swept up by the popular kids, was his confidant and protector. Her name is Josie, and she has a boyfriend, Matt, who is the leader of the group that terrorizes Peter every day. This book has 455 pages. There are a total of- pages. There are a total of nine sentences with what may be categorized as explicit sexual content. That sexual content is between Josie and Matt. They are seventeen years old. They've been in a year-long relationship. Content in context, that's critical in reviewing a book. Some parents have forgotten that important part, just as they have ignored the fact that students don't read the books they choose out loud to an audience. Most students know better, and they also know that a paragraph or two do not define the literary merit of a book. Here's another lesson. Pornography is defined as a representation of sexual behavior in books, pictures, films, that is intended to cause sexual excitement. That is not a definition of the brief scenes in this book. It also points out the fact that no one conducted any type of substantial review. No book is going to make anyone go out and have random sex or make them gay or transgender. Gay kids for years have been reading about straight characters, yet it doesn't make them straight. Conversely, straight kids don't become gay by reading books with gay characters. When students choose the books they want to read, those books can be safe places to experience scary things, to learn how to navigate life, to provide comfort when distressed. Reading allows us to see things from different perspectives. It builds understanding, empathy, and fairness. On the theme of bullying, and I think the board will agree.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Becky Wimmer.
Good evening, y'all. Thanks for having me. I'm Becky Wimmer, and unlike many who have spoken on this issue, I'm a longtime Forsyth Schools parent. My daughter graduated from the IB program at South High, and my son is a freshman at Lambert. I also have a PhD in English Literature, and it's as a parent and a literary scholar that I speak to you today. I know I don't have to explain to you that reading is good and censorship is bad. Instead, I want to draw your attention to a couple of the books that were removed from our library shelves, because here are the facts. These are good books, and it's good for students to read them. One of these, Later Gator, it's on my Kindle, so I'm just going to prop it up, by Lauren Miracle, is written in text messages sent among three high school girlfriends. I read not only this book, but the whole trilogy it concludes, and I can see why it's been an award winner and a top library pick for fifteen years. It's adorable, actually, and it's very easy for a less assured reader to pick it up and get engaged in it. Teens may just notice that the girls in the book are funny and relatable, but as a parent, what I notice is that on every page, what's being modeled is loving friendship. And as a scholar, I notice on every page that the practice of reading itself is being modeled. The girls' relationships are carried out textually. They have to analyze each other's language, tone, and meaning. They must become good readers in order to become better friends. The bit that's been pointed to as sexually explicit is actually an instance of cyberbullying in the book. One of the girls is targeted by a nasty ad placed in Craigslist, and her friends rally around her, involve parents, police, get the ad removed. This is the only obscenity in the entire novel, and it's labeled as such, called out, and remediated by the narrative itself. But if you only skimmed the book looking for dirty words, you would miss that critical context, and this is why we read books, not just pages of books. The Bluest Eye by Nobel Prize winner Toni Morrison is surely much more familiar to us. I have here today my daughter's lovingly annotated copy. Thank you, IB program. This is about Pacola Breedlove, a black child who wishes for the blue eyes and blond hair that she believes would make her life easier. A black girl is one of the most marginalized figures in society, but here she's at the center of the story and at the heart of the American canon. Pacola's rape by her father is the central horror of the novel. And it's that passage that has been called sexually explicit despite not being sexual and not particularly explicit. Is it shameful to be a victim? There's nothing easy or comfortable about this scene, but it is not pornography. And the legacy of racism and violence it confronts us with is not comfortable either, but great literature isn't supposed to just make us happy. So high school students can handle this. Not every book is for every student, but there is educational and even moral value in this difficult scene and in a tough but essential American novel. It's wrong-headed and actually illiterate to believe that you can judge the merit of a whole book based on a few lines. And I, and a large majority of parents, feel that to remove books without due process is blatant censorship. And so I call on the members of this board to affirm that the freedom to read for my child and for all students will be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren Paget.
Hi. My name is Lauren Paget, and I'm a freshman at Denmark High School, speaking on behalf of a teacher in the county. I would love to stand here and address you in person, but given the recent book banning, without following the formal written procedure, I have no confidence that my employment would be secure if I were to do so. As a social studies teacher, my goal is to inspire an interest in history and government in my students. When students leave my classroom, I hope they will be engaged citizens who truly care about their community and their country. I am inspired by the students who show up to speak at these board meetings in defense of their beliefs. They give me hope, even the ones who I disagree with. All of them should be commended for their courage to exercise their First Amendment rights and their sense of civic responsibility. One of the most disheartening things happening now, particularly for us in social studies, is the attack on both us and the content we teach. Many high-qualified teachers are leaving the district this year. They are retiring early, moving to different districts, or leaving the profession entirely. As their expertise is lost, we, the quality of education here will decline. Why has the board done nothing to defend its teachers in the face of constant criticism being leveled against us? You know we're not sexualizing students and giving them pornography. You know we're not teaching students to hate America, and if you do believe that, then I encourage you to visit our classrooms so you can see firsthand what we do. Feel free to contact us. We're happy to talk to you. There's no need to show up at these meetings and yell at the board. Most of the social studies teachers I know in the county are fairly conservative people, but while I see America as mostly a force of good in the world, I don't believe we can afford to ignore the mistakes we've made. History is complex. It's a story of triumph and tragedy, and I want my students to be able to understand the complexities of the past. Regardless of what you believe, you do not have the right to force your beliefs on others through the public school system. The First Amendment was written because our early leaders understood the value of individual thought and that citizens should not be compelled by the state to follow a certain set of beliefs. Our detractors accuse us of indoctrinating students in one breath, and then in the next amendment, we indoctrinate them with their ideas. That is not our job as teachers. The school system's job is to give your children the knowledge and skills they need to decide for themselves what to believe and to participate effectively in society, to exercise their God-given right to freedom of thought and speech enshrined in the First Amendment. I would ask you, ask that you not be unduly swayed by the talking points of a national organization.
Thank you, Ms. Paget. Our next speaker is Tracy White.
You have a hard job. You can't win for losing because, of course, you will never be able to please everyone. But that's part of the job and incredibly challenging because, as stated on the FCS website, we are the fifth-largest school district in Georgia with over 5,000 employees that serve 53,501 students and their families, representing 129 countries, 64 languages, and has experienced a 42% growth in the last decade. Something as simple as weather-related closures is not. You're lambasted for those closures, especially when it's only a small part of the county affected by weather, but it's the right decision for overall safety and because, of course, the backlash would be even greater should an accident happen because the schools weren't closed. Your job as leaders is to listen to everyone's concerns, but more importantly, your job is also to hold the line of progress for those things that are unequivocally proven and right, in shutting down falsehoods and misinformation. A few examples of those unequivocal truths: the earth is round. The planets revolve around the sun. CRT is not being taught in K through 12. There is no porn in our media centers. History should make us uncomfortable so that mistakes are not repeated. The way history is taught does need to change, and the white-victor versions reexamine to include experiences of all those affected by that history. Segregation was wrong. Love is love. Families come in all versions. Gay people exist and have rights just like everyone else. The protection of all people and their rights is more important than the discomfort of people who refuse to accept that the world is bigger than they want. Your job is to ensure that the community doesn't backslide into outdated and narrow-minded thinking, to educate society, to keep it moving forward. It is under a teacher's skilled watch that uncomfortable conversations should be had. The one place where respectful conversations from multiple and sometimes conflicting viewpoints should be happening, it should be happening, is in the classrooms with teachers whom you require to be certified with a degree to facilitate such things in a safe learning environment. Online comments made by the adults today shows us what happens when this is removed from classroom discussions and why bullying is still a problem. After the events of 1987, a commission was formed to investigate and analyze what happened and why. The final report is a fascinating read, but part of the conclusion applies just as much now. I quote, "In most communities, including Forsyth County, there are many people of goodwill, but there are also persons of ill-will whose influence, if unabated, will far exceed proportionately their numbers in the community." The principles of self-government embodied in our Constitution demand that the community, acting jointly and through its elected officials, observe, protect, and preserve the human and civil rights of all persons who live, work, or visit the community. To that end, it is your job to protect everyone's rights. It's your duty to shut down the nonsense. It means reminding those who ironically post profanity on their personal Facebook pages, yet want to remove books, that the books have already been vetted, and through a logical and reasonable established process, the answer is no, they will not be removed. Their right is to be involved, parent, and tell what their kids what they can and cannot read, not our children. Your job is to serve, it's not easy, serve the middle, reasonable, diverse majority, not the extremes, not the left or right, but the whole of the community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Renee Claire Kovacs.
Hey, guys. On a similar but unrelated issue, this is Autism Awareness Month, and so I wanted to come brag on my son Sawyer, who you guys met last month. Sawyer was diagnosed with autism at age four, and that put us smack in the middle of an individualized education plan, IEP, and in the middle of an IEP committee meeting, which you guys know is comprised of professional educators, people who are trained in special education and have years of experience in it. It is also inclusive of the parents, because the parents are the professionals on their child, on what they expect their child to be, what their limitations are, what their abilities are, and what's happening outside of the classroom. We need to bring that to the table. So when Sawyer was going into first grade, the committee recommended that Sawyer be put in a classroom for students with autism. My husband and I, being very involved parents, we went and looked and said, you know what, this is not going to challenge Sawyer in the way he needs to be challenged. So I went into the IEP meeting and faced a table full of people who said, he really needs to be in this classroom. And I said, he really doesn't. Finally, we got to a agreement, and the principal looked across the table at me, and he said, okay, but if anything happens, you're going to need to come to the school. And I think he meant it as a challenge, but it was really just a statement of fact. So I only get three minutes. So I have to skim through the next part of Sawyer's education. Mitch is probably behind me somewhere. He was Sawyer's principal, and he's probably ringing an email right now. But he can attest that any Kovacs, as is Sawyer's catchphrase, is bad news. It is bad news for a teacher who wants to sit and think that they get to rest on the laurels of the policies you guys get to enforce, because I'm going to be there if I think Sawyer can be challenged more. I was going to be there if Sawyer needed something changed, maybe, but tailored to him. Yes, we had an IEP, and not all parents do, but every parent has the right to be involved in their children's education. Since Sawyer spoke to you the week after, he was invited to study at Oxford. And after that, he won a pretty contentious Senate election for Student Government Association. So I now have him in my phone as Senator Sawyer. Parents are supposed to be involved in the children's education. It doesn't just have to be if you have a student with autism or special needs. So for Autism Awareness Month, I encourage all parents to be a part of your children's education, and I hope for everybody that they get a student and a son that's as wonderful as my son Sawyer. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Prego. No, Tracy. Mindy Moore.
Hi, guys. My name is Mindy Moore. I'm the mother of four. I have one graduate and three current students. And first off, I want to tell you guys happy anniversary. We have been at this a year, a year. It has been a year since hundreds of parents started showing up here regularly and talking to you all about protecting our babies, and we're not going to stop. They are our babies, and this is our heart. In the last year, I have sent a number of emails to all of you, including one just last week. Almost all of them have been ignored, including one about a serious safety issue with the buses around my son's middle school. Sadly, being ignored is the complaint I've heard by a lot of parents. So when parents voiced their frustration at last month's meeting, it was not their first step. They have been working the process and getting nowhere. They were not the parents who were invited to have a seat at the strategic planning discussions. They feel helpless in protecting their children. I'm going to read part of my email that I sent last Wednesday, the 13th, that I didn't get a single response to. "Board members, I have been on the front lines of protecting our children directly for a full year now and indirectly for thirty-plus years. I have served in classrooms, on PTO, LSC, and dozens of fundraising committees for years. I have seen firsthand that our teachers and administrators are amazing, and our schools have traditionally been some of the best in the entire country. What I have also seen is that over the last few years, there has been a very big shift from academics as the highest priority to emotions as a leading driver of decisions. We've stopped protecting our children from divisive concepts and obscene materials. We've added in supplemental student resources and teacher training that was filled with divisive ideologies like CRT and social justice causes. This is unacceptable for our schools to be pushing this. I have sat through monthly BOE meetings for most of the last year, or at a minimum, I watched them online. I have heard every speaker, every one of them, and have personally talked with dozens, if not hundreds, of parents and community members about their concerns. The BOE has been asked repeatedly to have a dialogue with concerned parents and to open up more conversation about the topics of concern. These repeated requests have been met with silence from this board. Aside from three BOE members who have made themselves available a handful of times in small, private settings, there has been no formal opportunity for parents to have a conversation with the board. We are allowed three minutes once a month to share our concerns, but there is no feedback to address the concerns. What we saw at last month's meeting was a boiling point for parents who were frustrated. They do not feel heard. They do not feel that their children are being protected in the schools that vow to protect them. They feel let down and ignored by each one of you. Show these parents that they matter and their children matter. Schedule a town hall-style event where all of you address the concerns and take questions. A conversation is what is desperately needed and the only way to show parents that you truly care. It's been a full year, and this is negligently overdue."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stefan Bartelski. Is that how I pronounce the last name, Bartelski?
Bartelski, actually.
Bartelski, sorry.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm Stefan Bartelski. I have grandsons in Vicory Elementary and Middle School. I had originally intended to address the board on the subject of diversity, inclusion, and equity, and the fact that these insidious ideas have only been put on hold, so I'm told, and not banished totally from the education environment. But I also was recently found out that new rules had been adopted for the, for the public meetings, for the comments, and I felt that I preferred to address that issue. Because, according to George Orwell, if liberty means anything at all, it means the right to tell people things that they do not want to hear. Now, I know that the board, and I hope that the board, has good intentions with changing the rules for comments. My concern is that these rules are very similar to measures that have been adopted in other jurisdictions, both in Georgia and throughout the country. And these rules have been, in other jurisdictions, have been introduced to prevent truth being spoken at their meetings. James Madison once said, "There are more instances of the abridgement of the freedom of the people by gradual and silent encroachments of those in power than violent and sudden usurpation." In today's world... In today's world, free and open, free and open political discourse is being stifled by the cancer, of cancel culture and censorship. Elon Musk commented on this situation recently by saying, "Free speech is essential to a functioning democracy." But democracy can protect itself, ironically, by using the peaceful democratic process. I live in District One, and I was told, and very happy to hear, that our representative on the board spoke out against these new rules when they were introduced. One person is obviously not enough. When I registered to speak here tonight, I was told that I could speak on this topic, but that the board would not be changing their decision. Well, I would like to say, if the board will not change their decision, then perhaps, we need to change the board. I call upon concerned parents, grandparents, and other free speech-loving citizens to stand for the board at the next opportunity. Standing together, we can make a difference and make sure that the education of our children is just that, education, not indoctrination. Thank you.
Mr. Bartelski, I think you came in late. Did you come in late? Because we did not change any, we, we did not change our public participation. So, thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Gates. Michelle Gates, no, Michelle Gates? Oh, sorry.
First, I want to thank you for letting us speak to you. Most people who know me know that I don't have a problem speaking in public at all, except when it comes to talking about my kids. It's not something I do a lot. I wanted to start by acknowledging the things that I know the board does, that maybe all parents don't realize happen behind the scenes, and some of it was already spoken about, but we haven't had a school shooting in Forsyth County. Because you work so closely with resource officers and law enforcement to protect our kids, there are avenues for homeless children who you know better than some people at the age of 18, before they've graduated from high school, are kicked out of their home because their parents don't accept their sexual orientation. And it's our school system that works with those kids and works with our nonprofits to make sure that there's a safety net for them. And so, I could go on about all the things that you do, that's not all of why I came here. I also want to acknowledge the teachers, because I have a 25-year-old, and a 20-year-old, and a 14-year-old, and the teachers in this county have been there for my kids when one of them lost his sister to a drug overdose, for my daughter when her, when her dad was deployed to Afghanistan, for, for, yes, an IEP for my son, for my youngest son. The teachers that are in our school system, they have more FaceTime with my kids than I do. And that means something to me. And I know other people have already spoken to you about this, but we're growing rapidly and we're losing fantastic teachers. And if there's any way that you can, can reinforce the positive things that they do for our kids every day, I am begging you to do that. I, I also want to acknowledge the parents that I know are here that might see things differently than me. Nothing is more humbling in my life than being a parent. There, there have been few things that have made me realize I don't actually know everything than, than being my kid's mom. They come home and they challenge me to think and see things differently, and that's happening at school. I, I respect and feel for parents, especially parents of young kids, that are worried about what their kids are going to get exposed to, but there's no parental control I can put on this phone that's going to make a difference if the kid next to my son on the bus doesn't have those parental controls, and there's nothing my kids are going to read in a book that they can't Google anymore. So, for me, it isn't about trying to keep everything out from in front of them, it's about trying to create a safe space where they can talk to me when they get upset about something or confused about something. And I would, I'm glad this is public, because even if just one parent hears me say this, I'm blessed that I've created a place in my own home where my kids can tell me that they were upset about something they heard or saw or read. And if they hear us get upset, and they hear us get angry about these things, we're not going to be the person they come to when they're really, really upset about something. So, thank you for what you do. I appreciate our teachers, and, and I feel for all the parents that are going through the same things that I'm trying to go through myself. Just as a simple example, it is possible to teach your kids that Black Lives Matter and why that, why that's an issue, but also make sure that they walk up and thank a person in uniform for their service. They can do both things, and we can be that model and we can be that example, and, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Clint Fishback.
Every time you say next speaker, it makes me think you're calling it. It's my phone. My name is Clint Fishback, and I have two daughters here in Forsyth. I'd first like to commend you with the efficiency you have with the speakers here. We moved here from Gwinnett last, over the summer, and you're able to cycle through more speakers in much less time than they can, and giving them the full three minutes. I don't know if you've ever watched any of their meetings, but they go, they've gone until midnight. I have watched several of these board member, meetings, and I've noticed, you know, you have a large speaker list at times. I see a list has a lot of the same names on it, and those repeat, repeat speakers tend to talk on the same topics. So, the board and superintendent repeatedly say that you hear our comments, but your actions kind of contradict that, or at least you hear them and you don't care. Because in your last working session, this issue was discussed. Now, what alarmed me was the path you went down. So, instead of taking the logical approach of examining why so many people are coming every month to speak, why they're speaking on the same topics, why there's, you know, repeating month after month, you took the approach of, should we limit public speaking? I'm like, seriously? Is that how you want to announce that we've been heard, is by limiting our speech? So, if you want to have your head in the sand, I guess that's the right approach, but who else limits speech is dictators? You know, if you can't win the argument with logic, you know, debate with facts and logic, you just silence the opposition. Now, I am delighted that you decided against limiting the input, at least for now, but the fact that it was even an option to explore sends shivers down my back, and it should every parent, grandparent, guardian, student, and taxpayer in this county. Now, COVID pulled back the curtain on education. My family, like so many others before, just saw the Board of Education elections as just another box of names on there that I had no idea who they were, and I just randomly voted. We paid little attention to what was actually being taught or how it was to be taught. Our concern was just helping our kids pass. But now, our eyes have been opened, and we are watching with a magnifying glass and speaking up about what school boards both here and around the nation are doing. So, if you truly have the children's best interests at heart, I suggest, like some others here, and engage the people, have town halls, get the discussions in there so you can discuss their prop, discuss this instead of muzzling them. Now, I will take a quick shout-out to say, in addition to having efficient here for meeting, I also have children on IEP, and your IEP process is so streamlined, and, you know, normally there, it's like two and a half, three hours. Here, it's like a 30-minute discussion because we get all the information up front and have discussions back and forth. So, during the meeting, it's just like, do you agree with this or have discussions?
Thank you.
Our next speaker, speaker is Anita Tucker. No Anita Tucker? All right, Adam Bice? All right, our last speaker tonight is Ms. Kim Satterfield.
Good evening. What an honor it is being a parent of three children who have and are currently attending Forsyth County Schools. And not only that, but being an educator in Forsyth County for 14 years. When we think of our vision of quality learning and superior performance for all, there is nothing that Forsyth County Schools represents in a better way than this. Students are at the heart and center of everything, thanks to you all. Thank you for that leadership. Thank you for our mission to prepare and inspire all learners to lead and succeed. Being a special education teacher, I teach students with all abilities and encourage and inspire all students and families to have a voice. That is very important, and you all are at the forefront of that. Thank you for that. Our belief is that a school-community partnership is essential. This belief makes me think of the word "together." We have a sign at the front of Chestity that says, "Together, we are Chestity. Together, we are better. Together, we are stronger." We have proved this over the last few years better than ever. Social-emotional learning is at the forefront of our kids, thanks to you all. Relationships, relationships built with kids are key. No significant learning can take place without first a significant relationship. A quote by James Comer that Forsyth County Schools holds very dear. I personally am excited for social-emotional programs in the school system such as Second Step, our Kindness Initiative, and mindfulness training. We received a grant for $7,500 at Chestity that we have used to promote kindness to students. Just recently, we took part in a kindness initiative. 4,579 random acts of kindness took place. We gave out tickets to kids, and the smiles and the delight on their faces was a joy. We have a mindfulness coach in Forsyth County who trains educators so we can implement many effective wellness moments with our students that I am so very thankful for, thanks to you all. Forsyth County values social-emotional wellness of our students and staff. And I want to thank you, our leaders, for leading the best school system that you could ever be a part of as a parent. I'm proud to have my own children in Forsyth County Schools. I'm proud to teach in Forsyth County Schools. Thank you, community and families, for also making this the best school system. We love and appreciate your support and your input, and we value it as educators. Educators love partnering and connecting with families. Together, we are better. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that concludes tonight's public participation. I want to personally thank everyone in this room for being respectful. I had a conversation with a parent last month, and she had a lot of concerns and, and had a lot of passion, and she said, "I'm scared to express those because I'm not going to be respected at the BOE." And I took that personal on me as being the chairman, and so, I knew that I needed to come and, and, and hold order and ask for respect. And so, thank you so much for being respectful to us tonight and following the rules. So, the next item on there is our points of information. Are there any points of information from anyone? Nope. All right, then we will go into executive session to discuss personnel. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Tom, second by?
Second.
By Ms. Light? All in favor? All in favor? All right, all right. All right, we'll be in executive session. Thank you. Is there a motion to come out of the executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by?
Second.
By Ms. Adams. Is there a motion? Oh, all in favor? All. Is there a motion to approve Personnel A, 1 through 2, 1 through 25, B, 1 through 5, C, 1 through 17?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by?
Second.
Ms. Adams, all in favor? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved by Ms. Light, second by Ms. Adams, all in favor? Meeting's adjourned.